We will open the public, uh, regular meeting of the planning commission. I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Leeny?
Present.
Vice Chair Lee?
Here.
Chair Oblea will be marked absent.
So, Commissioner Leeny, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Put your hands over your hearts. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so thank you so much for attending the planning commission tonight. Public comments, uh, folks that want, wishes to speak before the commission on the items that are not included in the agenda tonight. Uh, if you can fill out a blue speaker card and give it to Jessica, that'd be great. Um, Jessica, we didn't receive any.
No, we have not received any.
Then we will move on to the additions and revisions to the agenda. Is there anything being added or revised? Um, staff or clerk?
Uh, Vice Chair, at this time, we have no additions or revisions to the agenda.
Any of the commissioners? Okay. All right, then, oh, I have to call for above, right?
Yes.
No? Okay. All right, consent calendar, then, all right. Uh, is there anybody that wishes to pull the, pull anything out of the consent calendar for discussion? No? Okay, if not, I will, um, entertain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Leeny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, uh, presentation, do we have any staff presentations tonight?
Uh, no, just public hearings this evening, thank you.
Okay. All right, then, we'll move right along. Number seven, public hearings, then, um, seven, public hearing seven point one. Um, and again, I'll just remind public, uh, if you wish to speak on any of the agenda you don't, tonight, uh, please fill out a blue speaker slip and please submit it to Jessica. Thank you. So, seven point one, um, it was continued from May fifteenth meeting. Um, can we have the staff report, please?
Uh, yes, they'll be given by Ms. Emily Elliott this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. All right, this is the return of the proposal for a code amendment to allow residential beekeeping. In this case, residential beekeeping is for the hobby and non-commercial keeping of bees within residential zoning districts. It's an activity that's not currently permitted in Eastvale. Uh, staff is pursuing this at the direction of the city council to review how other cities operate or allow residential beekeeping and come forward with a proposal to allow the same use within the city of Eastvale. The staff report makes reference to a couple of definitions. The definition of a bee is limited to a specific species of bee, that is, the domesticated honeybee. Uh, beekeeping is defined as the resident, residential and hobby, uh, keeping of bees. It is not a commercial activity. And then we are referring to hives as bee boxes. At the last hearing, the planning commission had questions and directed staff to gather more information. One of the questions was how tall should a bee box be? How many bee boxes or hives are appropriate for the typical hobbyist? And what other cities are allowing beekeeping? So, for the height of a bee box, uh, we made some calls to beekeepers and those who supply beekeepers and learned that typically a bee box is about chest height, um, because they need to be serviced from the top down. And I had a local bee supply retailer take some measurements of bee boxes and he said about fifty-three inches would be the typical height, uh, for a hobby bee box. In this slide, it says staff recommends no specific height limit. However, further discussions have been had since this presentation was prepared and staff is recommending a maximum height of six feet. We are also recommending that bee boxes be screened from view, but a height of six feet would help ensure that those boxes are in fact screened and the screening material would be a reasonable height. In further discussions with beekeepers and beekeeping suppliers, um, we've learned that beekeepers need multiple bee boxes to accommodate the growth of their colonies and this includes splitting bees off when a colony grows too large. Based on our research, the minimum of two is required. Um, and a vast majority of beekeepers have four or fewer boxes. This is consistent with other cities and so staff is recommending a maximum of four bee boxes per residence. And I reference other cities and we've taken a look at quite a few cities that have similar densities or that are more dense density of Eastvale. Uh, this city has a density of approximately five thousand people per square mile. Our closest comparison would be the city of Sacramento, which also has a population of about five thousand people per square mile. No permit is required. Any residential lot can have, uh, two bee boxes, um, without any other regulations. The city of Fullerton does require a permit. However, they have no codified standards, but they do offer best management practices that are available at their city hall to all beekeepers that provide beekeepers with information on how to, uh, best manage their bee boxes. The city of Oakland has a density of seven thousand six hundred people per square mile. They do not require a permit for residential beekeeping, but limit the amount to three bee boxes on lots that are less than one acre. The city of Santa Ana is substantially more dense than the city of Redlands and recently approved residential beekeeping. They regulate the number of hives, but no permit is required. And their hives are, numbers are regulated based on lot size. A token number of hives are permitted initially and then for every additional three thousand square feet, an additional hive is permitted. And then finally, the city of Sac, uh, San Francisco, they have no beekeeping regulations whatsoever and allow beekeeping in any residential district in any number. To summarize, staff's recommendations for the city of Eastvale, we would require a permit and this would be able to, for staff to keep a log and note the locations of residential beekeepers. Each lot would be able to have up to four bee boxes. They would have to be located within the rear yard, screened from view, secured from unauthorized access. And then, again, we would recommend that the height be limited to no more than six feet. As part of the permit process, we would issue a notice to adjacent property owners or to adjacent neighbors. And if that neighbor were to come forward with a doctor's documentation of a severe bee allergy, that would be taken into consideration and the, uh, bee permit would likely not be issued if that documentation was verified. So, staff's recommendation is that with the revised standards that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of a beekeeping ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Commission have any questions for staff?
Um, I was able to pull the, um, sheet that was given to us on the first meeting that we didn't, um, have because the iPads were not working. Um, so I noticed that in this one that you guys are giving us, that you guys referenced, you know, uh, San Francisco, Oakland, Sacramento, Fullerton. But on this original sheet, you had Norco, Riverside, Beaumont, Calamasa, Desert Hot Springs, Hemet, Lake Elsinore. And, um, and they, these were the first ones. So, all of these cities require five hundred feet from a residence hospital, school, church, office building. Um, that's Norco, then Riverside is three hundred feet away. Beaumont is two hundred feet, Calamasa, three hundred feet. Um, Hemet, three hundred feet. Lake Elsinore, fifty feet from a neighboring property. Marietta, at least four hundred. Um, so those are the city, uh, Paris, a hundred feet. Um, San Jacinto, three hundred feet, Temecula, four hundred feet. I'm curious why that wasn't put in this new agenda packet. We are a young family community with lots of children, lots of parks, lots of schools. Schools within our neighborhoods, parks in every neighborhood, um, almost every neighborhood. I'm just not sure that, I mean, I certainly don't want a beehive next to my house. Like I said in the last meeting, my neighbors are five feet on this side and five feet on this side. It's just not something that I think is, um, in the best interest of Eastvale residents or Eastvale families to have the potential swarming, um, for Eastvale. I do believe that bees are important, but, um, so I'm just curious as to why these other ones with these limits in here were not put into this staff report for us.
So, this staff report made, as an attachment, the previous staff report with those attachments. So, it would, should have been included in your packet as an attachment.
But this one, I had to go look for from the previous meeting.
So, on, on the, uh, on the agenda in the, for this meeting, in the attachments, that there's a link to that attachment, if that makes sense. So, the attachments from the last meeting were brought forward for this packet.
But in this one, for your PowerPoint, you're pointing out only the ones that really don't have, don't require permits.
Yes.
It's almost like it's leading us to believe that, uh, areas with similar population densities are all for beekeeping.
So, staff chose to look at the more recent ordinances. Many of the ordinances that require these broad separation requirements are quite old ordinances. And as we heard in the presentation from the Beekeepers Association at the last meeting, bees have a flight radius of up to five miles, making things like a five hundred foot separation requirement essentially moot because a bee five hun, a beehive five hundred feet away has the ability to travel, I mean, up to five miles away. So, the separation require, you can't prevent a bee from flying five feet or fifty feet, it can go five miles. So, so staff is wrestling with, how do these separation requirements keep bees from going into people's yards? They can't. And so, we are looking at modern day ordinances that have been adopted within the last couple of years. Cities that are setting new standards for residential beekeeping versus commercial beekeeping.
Right, so if somebody has, um, let's say, let's say that I'm keeping bees and I'm two blocks over from McKeon Park and Clara Barton Elementary and then I'm not maintaining them and then something happens. You know, I'm just looking at the potential problems here and any issues that can happen with it, with a school, with an elementary school. Not just one, but, you know, six elementary schools here in Eastvale at capacity or over capacity with children.
Before I open the public hearing, any other questions? Sure.
So, my question is, is that when, and, and I saw that where you said some of the other cities limited it to three boxes, we said four boxes. But yet, when I read the packet, uh, that, that we were sent, it says that minimum you want two hives to succeed and sometimes up to four hives if you want to make them healthier. So, if we're gonna limit it to four boxes, uh, the height requirement to me is, is very important. But if we're gonna limit it to four boxes, you're not gonna have more than two hives. And in the packet, it said it's a minimum to be successful and that they're up to four hives to thrive. So, I'm just wondering, how did we get that correlation? If we're saying it's only four boxes, how do they get four hives?
You could, you could have one hive per box is where we're going with this. However, because our city would limit it to four boxes, the savvy beekeeper would need three hives or less because they would need that fourth empty box to be able to split a hive that is exceeding their, their current box.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Leeny?
Yeah, I just have one question, um, regarding number of hives per residence. I noticed, uh, in one of the attachment, that's actually attachment one to the staff report. Uh, Santa Ana has, um, kind of a, um, staggered or sort of, um, parameters for how many hives per, uh, for the size of the lot. I'm just thinking about like the lodge, for example, with these homes that are basically zero property, but have a patio with a little bit of grass. Has there been thought to potential, um, lot size?
It was considered and in the, in our research and talking with beekeeping experts, the size of the lot is not really, let me choose my words. It is not essential, the size of the lot, for the success of the hive. Until you get to a point where you maybe have eight hives on a lot and now you have bees competing. So, the number of hives on a lot, if kept at a reasonable number, like four, three, would not create a situation where you're having bees unable to thrive and needing to swarm.
So, as part of this ordinance, would there be any space requirements, a minimum space?
The bee boxes would have to just be located within a rear yard and be secured from access and to be screened from view.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I don't know, I don't know. Jessica, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we have received one from Ike Bootsma.
Mr. Bootsma?
Ike Bootsma, City of Eastvale. My question is, if we approve, uh, beekeeping in a backyard, is it gonna draw more bees? Because I've already had to remove three hives, uh, off of my property. And first one, I had to remove part of my roof, which cost over two thousand dollars. Then I had to take the bees out and, uh, take the honey out of the wall. And the second time it was in a lemon tree, which is no, was no problem. Now I have them again and they pulled me a thousand dollars, uh, to remove the bees. So, it's, it's getting kind of expensive, uh, removing these, uh, beehives. So, I don't know if it's gonna draw more or if it's gonna draw less. But it's, it's getting expensive, so I would really like to consider, you know, uh, see what, what they have answer for that, if, if that helped solve the problem or make it worse. It's already bad, so, um, really, that, I, I don't know which way to go on it. I'll be honest with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Carroll.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. I recognize a lot of your faces. I've been a Eastvale resident for fourteen years. Uh, maybe you don't recognize me, but I recognize some of you. Andrea being one of them, because I don't necessarily recognize your face, but your cars, because I run by your house all the time, we're neighbors. I, uh, I was in the plastic industry for over thirty years and, uh, I kind of got tossed into the beekeeping equipment, um, manufacturing, uh, six years ago. And I thought, oh, my gosh, what am I gonna do with these bees? You know, I'm a plastics guy. Today in two thousand nineteen, you call me more of a bee guy. Uh, the importance of bees, the opportunity I've had to work with, uh, hobbyists, uh, commercial beekeepers, uh, schools, uh, bee clubs, overcame a lot of my fears and a lot of my inexperience about the bees themselves. The, the bottom line is, the answer to say no bees, uh, in the city, in my opinion, i- is not the right approach. I think we need to, uh, allow certain regulations. I think controlling it and putting permitting in process is very important, for we can keep an eye on it. Uh, I think safety is important by best business practices. I've got grandsons, you know, I've got, uh, I've got pets, I've, I've got children. And I, and I'm a big, uh, person involved in, uh, parks and recreation within the, the city of Eastvale. And the last thing we want is somebody getting hurt. But I'll tell you, with all the stuff we have going on in the world today, the bees are one of the most natural, beautiful things I've ever seen in my life and I'm grateful to be part of it. I've got a passion for it. My kids, I'm pulling them into a passion for it. We're educating them, we're bringing them into bee clubs and making them understand. And I think getting out to schools and, and educating the kids and educating the teachers and educating these people with best business practices and the need for bees for, for pollination purposes, for, for honey purposes, for a variety of reasons and how they work together as a family is one of the most beautiful things you can see and I think it's something that Eastvale wants to be part of. So, thank you for letting me, uh, speak tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Savage.
Hi, my name is Liz. Um, you got to listen to me last time with my presentation. Um, I wanted to let you know, and I, I understand definitely where you're coming from, probably before I got into bees too. But you also have to understand, all these cities all have parks, all have schools. Fullerton, we have seven colleges in Fullerton, we have about seven elementary schools. We have twenty-one miles, twenty-three miles of trails that go up into the Coyote Hills. We get beehives up there as well, feral hives. Our biggest thing and the reason why I'm out here is to help educate. You already have beekeepers in Eastvale and what we want to do is help make it legal for them to operate. This gentleman, he's getting feral hives. With beekeepers, we have more commercial, we have the docile bees. He must have some pretty good plants at his house. I mean, they're going to his lemon blossoms, um, they found a little hole in your attic. Unfortunately, you know, that's what happens. They look for homes. As beekeepers, we are their home. We manage them and that's why we said a maximum of four hives. So that if we have a colony that starts to get too big, we can break it down and manage it before they come to the swarm. The swarm, the bee swarm is a natural process of bees, all bees, wild bees, commercial bees. Um, when they grow in the springtime, they quadruple, multiply. They outgrow the attic that they were in and they split up and swarm. Unfortunately, they leave half of the bees behind. So, uh, what are the bees in now that you have?
The bees are now, they're thirty foot up by the chimney and the roof again.
Yeah.
And, but they're so, our house is so tall.
It's hard to get to.
And then they go in between the wall, in between the walls.
They get in between the walls.
And you gotta remove the honey out of the wall altogether.
The bees have a super sense of smell. So, if you've had bees before, if it's not cleaned and taken care of properly, you will have bees again. Um, with, uh, beekeepers backyard, beekeepers, what we try to do is we try to manage the area. Uh, we, we try, you know, we still get feral bees in when we get those feral beehives or we have lots of beekeepers that go out and get swarms. We rehome them and requeen them so that they have the more docile, uh, behavior. We don't want anybody getting stung, we don't want anybody disturbing a hive, you know. We don't send anybody out to go take care of bee business. We have businesses that we work with, which they are licensed, that's their live bee removals, um, to take care of that. I've gotten calls, emails from actually people in Eastvale with swarms and bee problems. So, we, we try to help, you know, keep it as a hobby. Most of your beekeepers, when they first start, will actually fail their first, less than the first year. So, um, and John can probably attest to it. If any ordinance is passed, when it's passed, you're not gonna get a swarm of new people going in to be beekeepers and you're not gonna have fifty new beekeepers in your block. It just doesn't happen. Beekeeping is not a cheap hobby. And like I said, most of, fifty percent of the beekeepers fail within the first six months. So, if you have any questions, by all means, let me know. Thank you.
Can I ask, let's, a question? Right, okay. Um, just to address, uh, Mr. Bootsma's question, um, would, would by having, um, the ordinance and having more beekeepers out here in Eastvale, uh, would that solve his problem or would that kind of, um, exacerbate his problem?
It will not exacerbate it, you know, it will not make it a bigger problem. What it will do is help control some of the population that's around. I mean, if there was that swarm that landed in his lemon tree, if it's, if he was able to get a beekeeper to come get that swarm and rehome it and requeen it, then that, that turns into somebody's backyard beehive and there's nothing wrong with those bees. They will go back and visit his lemon tree, you know, because it's good and they get all the nectar from it and they get the pollen from it, but they're not gonna come look for a home. You have to understand, when you see a swarm, they, they are not, that's not their new home. The swarm in his lemon tree was, that was just their resting place. They have scout bees that are out looking for a home, like the attic.
Yeah, they, like, they were there for months.
Yeah, good conditions out here.
It was so big and beekeepers.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I came and got one, three met the house. The backyard was getting too many bees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so. Anybody else?
So, when you say that some of the hives will fail, or, or a lot of them will fail, then, um, what happens to the bees then?
They die.
And then, um, so, is there, I noticed in, in some of these cities, it just gives a packet that says that you should look into training, you should look into more information, but there isn't, is there actually licensing and?
No.
Training, no, there isn't?
No, and the reason for that is because you have so many diverse opinions and ways of doing things. Like I wash dishes my way, my husband washes them a dish different way. It's the same with beekeeping. You have beekeepers who like to treat their bees for borrel mites. You have beekeepers who are non-treatment. You have, you know, there's different ways of doing everything and, you know, there's ten different ways to split a hive. There's, you know, five.
So, there's no class that someone could take and have a certificate that says that they?
As far as the certificate, no.
And they know how to do it.
We, at, our club, we started beekeeping classes this year because I, it was never out there and I didn't think our meetings had enough time to do beekeeping classes. So, and John can attest to that, we had five different beekeeping classes that people were able to sign up for and take. We held them at our high school, Fullerton High School. We put an apiary out there on the high school grounds. So, the fear and everything, we had kids out there working those hives during the classes. There was one girl who is anaphylactic shock allergic to bee stings. She was out there right with everybody else. She didn't want to be held back, she had her EpiPen, she had an EpiPen in the office. But we held the classes right there on campus so that everybody could see. We have, um, six colonies right now and they're still very young, but we're hoping to get it to the point where they can produce honey and then as a fundraiser for the ag department. So, um, we do have the classes, but there is no real certification in it because people teach different ways and they teach different things.
No, and I get that because I keep tortoises and everybody has their own opinion. But, um, I guess that that's part of my concern, um, because it's bees and because they would be located in the backyards, which is difficult for code enforcement to see or even to check. which is difficult for code enforcement to see or even to check, you know, because they're in the backyard. So, it's not like something in the front yard where they can drive by or even the neighbor can see, unless the neighbor can view into the backyard. And so I guess that is my concern unless we had something in there that stated that they had to be checked on once a year or every six months.
With our code enforcement, it's complaint driven. So if, and they, I mean, there's various codes, you know.
Now, you wanna get to a point where there's a complaint to have someone go.
It's gonna happen because people, somebody might get stung by a wasp. A wasp is not a bee. And automatically, they're gonna say, oh, it's your bees. Because I know you have bees, but it wasn't a bee that they got stung by. So, you know, code enforcement can always go out there. They can always, you know, make an appointment with the homeowner, look at the hive, you know, you can see it's maintained, you know, it's not overgrown. I mean, you can tell. I mean, when you're, if they do any training, you know, code enforcement does training with bees, they'll be able to tell if there's a problem hive. I mean, you're gonna have feral hives all over, you have feral hives all over Eastvale already. I mean, he's had three. So, I mean, that's mostly where your code enforcement issues come from, are from feral bees that go to somebody's house, or that, you know, started right above their doorway, or that are swarming in the bush next to their driveway. Those are gonna be the complaints that you're gonna get more from bees. It's not gonna be from your backyard beekeepers, it's gonna be from your feral bees that are out there.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I've worked on it before. So, I mean, it's kinda contradictory what you said though, because in our back end it says, if you wanna be a beekeeper, take the class.
Right.
Listen to places you can take a class, the one is at Cal Poly.
They are not certified though.
So there's no certificate, you don't receive any?
No. No. Because we're not, we're not under the, we're not under, I will say, okay, the only one that does have a certificate program is the master beekeeping program at UC Davis. And that's, you know, that's a master beekeeping program, that's not somebody who is just like starting out. You have to be successful to even get into that class. You have to have been keeping bees for, you know, a few years or more and have had successful years. If you start bees and your bees die, or you lose them within eight months, that's not very successful. UC Davis is not gonna take you into their program. They want people on the master level, you know, and they'll give you a certificate. Ours is more for the information, you know, how to open your hive, how to check your bees, how to check for babies and brood, how to find your queen, you know, how to add boxes, splitting your hive. What we do are the basics to get you ground, get you off the ground and be successful so that you have a more than, you know, a few months.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, do we have any more speakers?
No, we do not.
Okay, and so at this time, I will close the public hearing. Commission discussion, comments from commissioners. All right, then, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we follow what the planning, what the staff recommends, approval to the city council of an amendment to the Eastvale Code for non-commercial residential beekeeping.
And just to clarify, that recommendation would also include the staff's recommendation for the height limit of six feet?
Yes, yes.
And just to clarify, it has the screening condition in there too?
Correct, that was already in the staff report. The only change in the staff report is the height limit of six feet.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
No.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Item 7.2, Major Development Plan Review.
Yeah, good evening, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission and members of the audience. Let me have that. All right. So, tonight for your consideration is the State Bridge Hotel. It is going to be located at the Hamner Place, which is formerly referred to as the Palopolis Site, which you're all familiar with. It does have a certain classification for naming for major development plan review and a conditional use permit. And the numbering system is located there on the slide, but for the record, 19-20023. So, State Bridge Hotel, coming into Eastvale, California, is represented by the IHG, which is the Intercontinental Hotel Group. And we have members for the IHG in the audience this evening, should the commission have any questions for them. Also, the property owner and the representatives from Lewis. So, State Bridge Intercontinental Hotel Group does offer a variety of different products. As you can see there on the slide, some are luxury hotels, but you can see Regent, Holiday Inn, et cetera, many, many different types of products, not just in the Americas but also worldwide. So they are an extended stay suite type of hotel rooms. And so later in the presentation, we have some examples of the types of rooms that there are for. Approximately 25 employees. Important to note that the owners of this particular hotel site are Eastvale residents. It's the Eastvale Palace LLC, and they do reside here. And what will be very unique to the inland empire, and very, I think, unique just for hotels in general, is that this one will feature a vegan menu option. We do believe that's the only hotel to be able to do that in the IE. So at your dais, you do have a full-blown copy of the site plan. But just so you know, as in the staff report, it does say that this particular site is located on the southern section. It's adjacent to the soccer complex of Silver Lakes. But it is on parcel number five of the tentative parcel map. And what you see there in the site plan is just, there are several of the sites that have yet to be entitled. So, we have made mention of those that have not been entitled as of yet. The hotel site, as you see, and the restaurant site, and then the future parcel for development in the rear of the site. So if you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to answer them. And as is customary for any type of development that's in the commercial zone, which is, this is located in the C1 zone. We did a matrix where we went through and compared what the development standard was per code, what the specification was in terms of the number of requirements or square footage, et cetera. And then also what was proposed by the applicant, and whether or not it meets codes. And what's important to note about this particular slide is that the development will meet all of the requirements as required by the C1 zone, the commercial zone in our community. And any area in which it was not shown, like landscaping, lighting, and parking, those are details that typically come on the, excuse me, just landscaping and lighting. Those are details that typically come on the landscape plan check. We have put those conditions and made them a part of this project this evening. So, on to. I think our city administrator and the planning staff and Lewis have worked very diligently to come up with a conceptual entryway treatment. So the difference between the Hamner Place is that you won't have the strip commercial center type design. We are working very diligently to do entry monumentation, gateway features. This is a conceptual design that we're working with the developer on, but we wanted to show you the differences between this particular center and the ones that you might see in Eastvale right now. So this would be a premier center, a lifestyle center, one where people would park and stay, and not park and take care of their errands and then leave. So we have some architectural renderings, so we can see the front entry treatment, which is definitive from the rest of the building. The project has been conditioned to add a definitive entry feature of some sort. So typically, you would see something in the neighborhood of art or water or fire, or some sort of entry feature that separates the main entry from the rest of the hotel, and that creates that sense of entry and that sense of presence, which is very important when you're looking at a hotel. This one hotel does feature a very, this amenity, this rooftop, amenity which you see up in the top right part of your screen, that is the other side of the hotel, and then you can see where the elevator chambers come up, and then you have an opportunity for dining. Even you can hold meetings or gathering up on the rooftop and take, in the lovely Southern California weather and the scenic vistas. You also see that banquet facility that's just below, you see the hotel, just below the hotel there. And also, that also has rooftop gathering. And then you also see the open space area in between the two, and then also the pool area. So we are very excited to present to you this type of hotel with this type of amenity, not seen in this community prior to now. Just a more updated version of the, well, up close version of the pool and patio area. I do, there's several amenities that the hotel offers, and so we wanted to give you an idea, not just the, you know, continental breakfast that you would see just on a table, full-size eating area, have a breakfast bar with all of the modern decorations. You see a fireplace there and all of the LED type lighting. There also has a fitness center in this hotel as well. This is a single-bedroom suite prototype, but there are three other bedroom type styles, and we'll show you a couple of the floor plans as we go through the presentation this evening. But you can see, very modern and very appealing. So I have a floor plan on the left of one of the one-bedroom suites, and there's close up some of the kitchen area, and also just a side view of the room itself. This is the smallest of the rooms, it's about 366 square feet, but they all have kitchen and living areas, even the smallest one. So, as a summary of all the room amenities, this one I've, we chose to put the two-bedroom suite. So, you see there, it has three beds. Fully equipped kitchen, and we talked about refrigerators, microwaves, cooktops, toasters, dishwashers. There is internet access, workspaces, should you be wanting to do some work and not be on the rooftop. There's also storage areas, and then also ironing board. This hotel is also pet-friendly as well, so I wanted to add that. And at this point in the presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to our economic development manager, Kimberly Wright. She's added some information about the financial benefits that the city can expect to see from the hotel.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Lee, commissioners, members of the public. I am going to share some highlights that Gina shared already a little bit in the staff report. But the State, excuse me, the State Bridge Hotel will have 96,000, over 96,000 square foot of hotel, 120 rooms, 4,000 square foot and banquet facility. And the minimum room rate will be $217,000, goodness gracious, $217 per night. So the potential for one-time revenue to the city and DIF fees, development impact fees, will be over 196,000, close to 197,000. And potential for annual revenue is 117 in annual business registration fees. Now, based on 85% occupancy for the transient occupancy tax, we are near 808,000, and this is on the conservative side. It will take about two to three years possibly for the TOT to be realized. Typically, just based on the, normalizing the rates and occupancy, property tax will be $7,395, and that's property tax revenue to the city. And then fire fund revenue for the city is $19,500. And I'm gonna turn that back over to Gina.
For your consideration this evening, Commissioner, the proposed site does comply with the zoning requirements, both the hotel and the banquet facility. And then also, the alcohol sales are a part of the conditional use permit. And staff was able to make all of the findings in a positive manner, and they're listed in your agenda report. Do also want to note that it is not within any area that's gonna be affected by the airport, in the Chino Airport influence area, so that's one of the findings that were required to make. We did satisfy all the public hearing requirements, making sure that everybody within a thousand-foot radius of the site did receive the notice. That information is in your agenda packet as well. And then also in terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, this particular site is a part of the master EIR that was done previously. And we've included a small table in the agenda packet, but essentially both the hotel and the banquet facility incorporated as a part of a hotel, in this case separate, but still nevertheless, of the use of banquet facility itself being covered by the environmental impact report. Mr. Peter Mediger is here, if you have any questions for the sequin document. Like I said, the hotel proprietor and Louis Holmes and IHG Hotel Group is also here. And of course, as your staff representative, I can answer any questions that you may have as well. So that concludes our presentation this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we also have presentation from the applicant as well?
Not a presentation, but I do know that there is a speaker card, at least one, am I correct? Jessica, at least one that, I believe it's from IHG. Oh, two, okay.
Okay.
So it's up to you if you wanna bring them up now or wait till the public hearing.
Well, if, yeah, if the commissioners have any quick questions for the staff, we'll entertain those, and then we'll have the applicant come up. Do you have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Laney?
The minimum room rate of $1017, is that just, is that literally the minimum?
Yes, sir. That was confirmed with the hotel proprietor for this site in Eastvale. And we also confirmed that with the nearest, the nearest State Bridge Hotel in Dos Lagos.
Okay, so, assuming this was built tomorrow, six months from now, 12 months from now, three years from now, the minimum for a room at State Bridge in Eastvale will be 217?
Good point. I could see that maybe inflation could, or you know, possibly raise the room rate. But I can see as of today, that is the room rate, that's what our hotel proprietor confirmed, that's what they're intending to start their rooms at. But certainly, we can have them come up and ask, I mean, answer if there's gonna be any difference than what we stated here today.
So is the, my follow-up then is the TOT estimate, is it based off of that?
Absolutely, it is. That's based off the minimum. So some rooms in the hotel would be more than 217, but we took the minimum, and we assumed the 85% occupancy rate.
Okay. And perhaps I didn't look for it in the agenda packet, but do you know what the vacancy rate is at the one in Dos Lagos?
I did not ask that question. I can find it out and get it to you. Or maybe I can ask the hotel proprietor if they happen to know, but I did not ask it. But did you, not specific to this hotel brand, but we do know from Corona to Ontario, the average occupancy rate is 85% from hotel studies.
And how about the, do you have an average of room rate? I mean, I understand there's different classes. I mean, even with the Merit and Hilton, I know there's a gazillion different hotels.
We did call, we did some research from the staff level, and we called every hotel in the immediate vicinity that had a suite-style hotel, and the room rates were very comparable. I can provide that for you if you'd like for me to leave the dais and go get that information, but we did call every single one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is there a, is there a full-service restaurant there?
No, Commissioner, there is not. There is not a restaurant, meaning like a separate name or brand, but there is food facilities there, yes, but not a separate restaurant. Like a different name, brand, et cetera.
So like, would there be food for the rooftop bar?
Yes, but it would be provided by the hotel. So what you mean by if there's a restaurant, meaning is there a kitchen facility? And would the restaurant be cooking? The answer to that is yes, but not a separate name.
And then you could have, when you rent out the banquet facility, you can get, you can order food or get catering from that facility there, you don't have to bring it in.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
But correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a discussion in the staff report about possibly having a restaurant. Is that correct?
I didn't, no, I don't.
Okay. Maybe I'm a little bit confused, but it's okay. Maybe, maybe the applicant come up and.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we had. We did talk about the distinction between the banquet. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we had. We did talk about the distinction between the banquet facility and the hotel itself, but I didn't say there's kitchen facility, but not necessarily a, a, a separate name, brand restaurant. Yes.
My question's pretty quick too. So of, of the projects that we normally do, I'm used to it. Depending on the square footage of the grocery store, it has to have so many parking places.
Correct.
So in a case like this, when you have a hotel, does the same standard apply? Is it based on square footage? Is it based on how many rooms? You know, if we have twenty-five employees, because we're running into this in some of the other areas where if they have multiple employees, those employees are taking parking places and then you go to find someplace to park and there is no place. So that was kind of my question. Usually we talk about there are a hundred and thirty-two parking places, fiber which are handicap, you know? And we really didn't get into the details at this point and I'm okay with that. But did we assess it on what basis is what I'm curious about?
Yes, Commissioner, we did do a parking analysis and the Eastville Municipal Code for Hotels uses there's a parking requirement of one space for every room. So that would be a hundred and twenty spaces in this case. And then although the Eastville Municipal Code does not require anything separate, we also did the analysis from the banquet facility to be as conservative as possible. So when you add the hotel and the requirement from the banquet facility, then the site has more than enough parking, one forty-five is what's provided and one thirty-seven is what would be required based upon the code requirement.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, but it's a four thousand square foot room.
That's correct.
And I just Googled how many people you can fit with a seventy-two inch round table. That's ten to twelve, that's twelve square feet per person. So that's the largest. There's thirty-three tables, so three hundred and thirty people. So just conservatively, say two hundred and fifty people. And we all know that we need banquet space here in Eastville because Silver Lakes is constantly being used. And I, so I'm just thinking that if, if that room is being used all the time with, let's just say a hundred to a hundred and fifty people and we're allowing fourteen to fifteen spaces for that. And if the hotel is at eighty-five percent occupancy. I did look at the map to see where the rest, where everyone else can park. And there does seem to be some other spots to park. But I just think that adding fifteen spots for a four thousand square foot banquet room, although it might be okay, I don't think it's sufficient. Or it might be a standard, but I don't think it's sufficient.
It's actually, it's a part of the banquet facility is usually actually inside the hotel. And so it's never, it's not, this one because of the rooftop amenity, they wanted to be able to have that additional amenity, which is, is nice given the proximity to Silver Lakes. So that's the reason why it's been separated out. Normally that floor plan of that would be inside the facility and you wouldn't park it separately. But we went ahead and added that just in case anybody had any comments, questions, concerns. So per our code, the site parks with a hundred and twenty spaces just for the hotel. But I also wanted to say that on the leasable space in the banquet facility is anywhere from twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven hundred. We went with the most conservative number, which was twenty-seven hundred and per code. That would be an additional, let's see, five and a half parking spaces for every thousand square feet. And so for gathering type facilities, anytime you have a church, the same type of requirement, it's usually for fixed seats or leasable area. And this was, this would be consistent with what we've done for other types of uses where you have gathering. So.
All right. So I have a few questions based on the site plan that we were provided. So in the, the agenda item that we had before and then the item that was passed at the council was to get rid of the Schleishman interchange, right? So how does that impact the Schleishman Road here? Is it getting narrowed? What impact does it have? And does that potentially open up for more room for parking or anything like that?
So the site configuration that you see here does accommodate the Schleishman Avenue general plan amendment that was recently approved by council. And so the road did narrow. It does provide an additional, additional acreage for development. But that has yet to be before the commission or before staff for consideration. So the only part of the site plan that we know of to date is what's before you today, which is the hotel, the restaurant pads and the two retail pads. Everything else is featured to be approved and or later to be designed or developed. But it does, the, the, the configuration of the lot you see does take that into consideration, sir.
Great. The other question is regards to pedestrian access and pedestrian walkways. Currently in the site plan, I can't really see exactly which pathways or walkways are kind of present between the hotels and the restaurants and the rest of the sites in the, in the specific plan, as well as linkage to Silver Lakes. So what, is there a, already a discussion with Silver Lakes on where the access points are for pedestrians between? Because I hate to see folks go all the way out to Hamner and then go walk down and enter through the main gates for Silver Lakes. But you know, if they can have access points, at least a pedestrian access points between the two, I think that would, that would be helpful.
So Gina, I can respond to this because I reached out to R J Brandis and R, R J Brandis is concerned about pedestrian connections. Well, for one thing, he charges for parking on his site and he wants to capture that revenue, people parking on his site. And the other thing is, is there's about a twenty-six foot height difference between the location of where this hotel is and where Silver Lakes ground floor is. And he is concerned when he's having major events or activities down at his that people would park for free up on, on this site and just walk down rather than, and, and then none of the tenants could park in this area because the free parking is up there and they would just park down here. So there, there, there are some parking management concerns that he had, as well as some revenue concerns. We were also trying to figure out if there was a way to do that. But with the city boundary being between the two, as well as being two different property owners that weren't necessarily, they, they, they want to benefit from each other, but they also want to be separate from each other to a certain degree. So what we were working with the Lewises is to figure out how do we provide a sidewalk or a board rock path at the top rim of the, of the, along the Palopolis site or Hamner Place site that would connect this hotel with the Heroes Restaurant? So that you could walk along that and oversee Silver Lakes and get out to Hamner. And then there's a road that walks you back down to Silver Lakes there. That, that is their exit road for major events. That is one way or you could walk all the way over to the main gate. But one of the challenges with providing a pedestrian accessway is you also have to provide ADA a, a path. And so the switchbacks to go up twenty-six feet are pretty significant on that hillside.
I might add to the city manager's comments in conditions number thirty-one, excuse me, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four are addressing pathways, pedestrian pathways to the extent that we can and without dealing with the height differential switchbacks and disconnectivity from the hotel to the other parcels on the site. So that, it has been added as a condition.
All right, thank you. So at this point, is there any other questions present? Okay.
So I guess to listen to what our city manager said, I'm surprised, quite honestly, because, you know, they put escalators in all over the place. You know, you can go to the L A County Fair, you can stay at the hotel, you're still paying for, for parking. And then you can walk through the hotel and get into the fair. That's much easier. So if you're willing to stay at a hotel for five hundred dollars for the night, spend another five hundred dollars on food, it seems funny that they're going to get petty over ten bucks or twenty bucks per parking. That we ought to be able to negotiate something like that with them saying, look, we're going to share this because we're going to have the same issue. We don't want people that are going to go play soccer to come up and take all our parking places either. So parking management is going to be an issue, but I'm really disappointed that they didn't want to work something out like that.
All right. So at this time I will open the public hearing. Jessica, I need speaker.
Our first speaker is Ike Butzma.
Mr. Butzma.
I'm re, I'm kind of proud that this hotel is considering Eastville for their hotel. And I think it'd be a good fit for Hamner Place. I think it, it'd be a drawing power for, we might be able to get another restaurant up in Eastville. I think it, it could be a high-end overlooking Silver Lakes. I think it's a good drawing power. And I think it'd be a good fit for the city of Eastville to have some, a hotel like this overlooking Silver Lakes and the tax money that comes, the room tax that come in the city of Eastville. So I think it's a good fit for the city of Eastville and I think it, for Hamner Place, I think it's a good drawing power. And it might even get another restaurant besides Harold's in, in this biggest thing that the city wants is, or sit-down restaurants. You know, thank you.
Our next speaker is Rich Carlson.
That was my knee. Well, good evening. My name is Rich Carlson. I'm going to speak tonight for the, both for the ownership group and for Intercontinental Hotels Group, I H G. I'll give you a little bit of a broad brush and then, and then I can be available for questions. So first I'd like to talk, I guess I'd like to tell you about three things. One is the owner. The second is Intercontinental Hotels Group, I H G, and, and a little bit more about that company. And then also to speak to you about Stabridge Suites and why we think it's the right brand for this market. First of all, I'll talk about the, the owners. The members of this ownership group own and operate restaurants, hotels, convenience stores and gas stations in several western states. Their brands that are open or under development include Subway, Wingstop, Little Caesar's, Nectar, Baskin Robbins, Courtyard by Marriott, Radisson, Home Two by Hilton, Holiday Inn Express and Avid Hotels by I H G. They have a reputation for quality and integrity. They are highly thought of by all of the franchise companies that do business with them, so they are good brand citizens. And, and it was that together with their relationship with the Lewis Group. One of the owners lives here in Eastville. And so they had a great relationship with, with the Lewis Group. And also the quality of the community really attracted I H G to this deal. Intercontinental Hotels Group is the third largest hotel company in the world. Fifteen brands, five thousand five hundred hotels, every continent except Antarctica. And I think we heard some of the brands, Intercontinental, Regent International, Kimpton, Hotel Indigo, Stabridge Suites, Holiday Inn, Holiday Inn Express, and the two newest brands, Avid Hotels and Atwell Suites. I H G has nine call centers that speak thirteen languages globally. It's, it's probably the, the strongest global company of all of the major hotel companies. So you'll have a lot of eyes on Eastville. Someone's coming to this part of the world, even if they put in Ontario, it'll show the closest hotels to Ontario. Eastville will be in that mix. Likewise, likewise Corona, likewise Norco. The projects, as you know, is a hundred and twenty-room four-story Stabridge Suites with a, with an adjacent event center. The event center is going to be great for families, weddings, groups, including nonprofits. You can think Chamber of Commerce, corporate events. It'll be, it'll be a great addition to the city, especially in that location. As far as Stabridge goes, it's an upscale extended stay hotel. The guest profile, typically thirties, forties and fifties in age, some younger, some older. Fifty-fifty men and women. And typical household income range is a hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per household. And if you talk to any economic development director, they'll say that's a, that's a really good number. Almost done?
Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so psychographically, most of them enjoy social interaction. We've done our research. Most of them enjoy social interaction. They seek experiences and places where they can interact with others in a variety of settings. The competitive set, Homewood Suites by Hilton, Residence Inn by Marriott, Hyatt House and Element by Westin. And these particular hotels, because they have kitchens, it's a large suite, it's a high amenity hotel. They will attract guests, I guess I should say, guests will drive further and pay more to get this room. Works great for corporate. You heard the typical corporate rate, I think, from your staff, corporate midweek weight rate. And it also works well with leisure. Teams love it. In addition to the beds, there's a, there's a queen sofa sleeper in every suite. So that's, that is the summary of the, of the project and who we are and what we're about and why we love Eastville. And if you have any questions for me, I'm certainly available.
Thank you. Any, do you, do you have any questions for the applicant? No. Any more speakers?
No, we do not.
Okay.
If the commission, commission may, Mr. Rick Manners is with the Lewis Group. I believe he may want to address the commission and he will fill out a card and.
I apologize. Commissioners, I'm Rick Manners with Lewis Retail Centers. I just wanted to touch on a couple of questions that came up. Parking, if you look at the overall site plan, what's being envisioned right now, especially with the banquet facility, is that Heroes is at the southwest corner of the property. That will be a lunch and dinner only operator. And then on the site plan, just east of that, adjacent to the hotel, is what we're calling Restaurant Five. Right now, we don't have a commitment as far as a tenant, but we are looking for more of a breakfast lunch only operator. And then Starbucks is immediately north of Heroes. So within that zone of those three buildings, we're anticipating that there will be shared parking opportunity. For instance, if Chamber of Commerce wanted to do their morning meeting at the banquet facility and there was overfull of parking, they could flow to the west into the Heroes or part of the Starbucks area. If the, if we do get the breakfast operator, he would still have parking available in that zone. So we're seeing that shared parking opportunity as a part of this overall plan. And then these days with the Ubers and Lifts of the world, we're sure that a majority or a percentage of people coming to that facility may come via Uber, those other uses. So that cuts down on the overall demand for parking. And then the question about the right-of-way and future development, there have been many conversations. And ultimately it may be a case where to the east of the hotel, east and north, there may be shared parking opportunities between those future uses and the hotel banquet facility. So we, we feel as an overall plan, parking should not become an issue. And then the second question I heard was on the pedestrian paths. Brian and Gina did lay out that on the south, at the top of the slope between this property and Silver Lakes, there is a walkway being anticipated that would start far to the east where the future development will be. It'll go along top of slope over to Restaurant Five, connecting over to Heroes. Along that walkway, we're also proposing some viewpoint or vista seating areas, if you will. So maybe you're waiting for a restaurant or at the event center, you just want to go hang out and see what's going on at the soccer fields. You'd be able to sit in those vista areas and look over Silver Lakes. And then from just east of Heroes going north, we have a connecting walkway that leads all the way up to the, across Schleishman to the development on the north side of the street. We also have a link from basically just south of Starbucks out to Hamner. And then up at Schleishman, there's a proposed trail and walkway on each side of that street that'll connect into the project. North of Schleishman. North of Schleishman, there's a proposed walkway that'll connect from Hamner through the future Chevron site, linking over to the shop buildings, and then potentially to the future development to the east. So it's very well-linked for pedestrians, bikes, skateboards, you name it. Hopefully not skateboards. So hopefully that answers those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, I will close the public hearing. And commission discussion at this point, so commissioners.
Comment.
Okay.
Did talk about charging stations. That we have a certain amount of charging stations we've been putting in the newer projects. And, you know, some of it to our fault. We didn't think like this ten years ago, five years ago, when we did a lot of projects. And we've got some really nice shopping centers in our city right now that don't have charging stations. And some of the places you go, you're there for two hours shopping. So I wanna make sure on this one here, we cover that. And we don't have a necessary standard, but I think we should at least have a four-car minimum. You know, depending on what kind of traffic we have, we should be able to come up with some number that makes sense. Because like we talked earlier, the Fieldhouse has four, four charging stations, they're full all the time. Every day, there's somebody in there charging their car. So it is catching on.
Commissioner, we have a condition of approval number twenty-eight that does require an electric vehicle charging station. However, it says one. I know that we have one, two, two other parcels that have yet to be developed and then the possible parcel in the rear of the property. So right now, we put one on this side, but it's up to the commission if you wish to change that. But we did, I did add that as condition number twenty-eight.
So Gina for the-
So I would think that there would be more, you know, at different locations, not just at this side, but-
Yeah. So we'll, we'll put more conditions in there for our charging stations in the future for other sites. But for this one, I think one is just not enough-
Okay.
-for a charging station.
Absolutely.
So at least, at least two Level Two charging stations and then two DC fast charge. At least the conduit should be ready for those. Possibly having, if, if applicant is minimal to it, then we can, we can possibly put four Level Two charging stations. So possibly six total, but at least minimum four. Two DC fast charge and two Level Two should be conditioned in there. I don't know if, if applicant wanna comment on that or not. But we'll, we'll, we'll get to all the comments first and then we'll have the applicant address it. Any other comments?
Yes.
Sure.
I'm wondering if the, is this where we can make changes or suggestions? The rooftop bar, just because it's so exposed and we, it's very hot and windy here. And I have spent a lot of time at the Fieldhouse. So I'm just thinking if there should be something more permanent up there to shield from the elements at least covering. Because it would make that bar kind of useless for most of the year. And then when I was looking at the pool, it just, it just seemed very basic. And then I, it almost looks like an above-ground spa there in the corner. Was there an in-ground spa there on the facility? Or just a pool?
I, yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the actual, so I did see up in the upper, on the right-hand side, behind the trees, that there's some sort of spa area there. This is conceptual rendering. I, I would also answer, answer the first part of your question that says there is a condition number twenty, thirty-one, that talks about a covering for the rooftop, outdoor and rooftop seating areas, so-
Okay, so not just the umbrellas that are there?
I did not specify permanent, because I did see the fixtures. And so I do see the umbrellas, but I also see that there's permanent canopies as well. So the intent was to have, you know, permanent coverings offered as well as some temporary movable ones. That was the intent behind the condition, but if, if the commission sees fit, they can modify that. I can only, it looks as though there is a jacuzzi, but I'd have to defer to the hotel proprietor to, to speak more about the intention of the jacuzzi. Jacuzzi?
It's an in-ground.
In-ground, okay, in-ground, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
No, okay. Then I'll, I'll make some suggestions. Again, my comment is, you know, this is, this is definitely something that we need in our city. I agree with the staff recommendations, this, you know, and, and all the projections. And I really like the projections and, and all the revenue that's gonna come to our city. It's an amenity that we, we definitely need ours today, so I agree with those. So my, my, my comments are kind of tweaks to the, to the project. It's based on the limited sight plans that we, that we, that we've seen today. I think the pedestrian walkway idea behind the hotel, linking it to Hero is a great idea. But internally, within, within the site, I think we do need to provide more pedestrian walkway, especially crossing the Schleishman Road. So we talked about, extensively, we talked about parking. And I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll go over that parking limit just on the hotel side. So more people will be parking across the street. You know, it's, it's blanked out, but I'm sure we'll have our civic amenities in there. We'll have more parking during the weekdays, during the evening, and the weekends. We'll have plenty of parking out there because those are civic uses. So there will be more people walking, and, and crossing Schleishman Road. So having possibly a mid-block crossing on, on Schleishman to get access to the hotel directly, I think that's, that's kind of needed. And then also in terms of the, the parking. So I just counted the numbers that we currently have is about four hundred and fifty-six, right? Total, but does the staff know approximately, I know it's blacked out, but how many more parking spaces will be kind of included in the civic parcel as, in the future development parcels? I mean, roughly?
There, there, there's not a conceptual plan for the civic parcel, but I, you know, given the fact that it would have, if this was the parcel, it would house the library and the civic center, it could-
It'd be hundreds.
Yeah, I was gonna say it'd be lots and lots. Hundreds is good, but I don't have an exact number, but it would be ample, let's put it that way, more than ample.
Yeah, so I, I, I think when we were looking at it, I think we should also think about the future that's going in there. Future sites that are going in there, that are, that are planned. I think we'll have more than enough parking. We're kind of worried about at this point, this, one, one site where we're kind of concerned about the hotel parking. But I think in the future development and the civic parcel, I think we'll have plenty of parking as for, for residents and, and future use, for folks to use in the future. So I'm, I'm okay with the parking. And I think, given that there will be a pedestrian walkway behind the hotel, I think, I, I agree with Commissioner Charleston. I think at least we should show it in our plans that there will, that there can be in future pedestrian access between Silver Lakes and, and the site. We don't need to provide it at this point, but we should at least map it so that at least we have that negotiation point in there in, in future. Because the management could change, or things could change between the event center and, and our site. There could be, you know, I don't know, escalator would be a right amenity, but there could be some other walkways in, in the future that we can, we can think of. So I think at least have that possibility of having that on the map. I think it, it's prudent for us. So with that-
There's a great, excuse me, there's a great deal of frontage that's just east of here that could, that is contingent with the civic center parcel. And, and we could, it should, we could, we could continue the conversations with Silver Lakes and, and this site to identify if there is an opportunity. But you have to have a willing partnership and a collaboration there, and, and we haven't gotten to that point yet. We, we, we had multiple meetings to try to get there and we weren't able to do it.
I, I agree, but I think we should still push it.
Yes. We are, we, we are pushing for it, we just, I, they could put a fence around their property.
Got it. So with that, any other comments from the commission? If not, I will entertain a motion, given all the new conditions that are in. Or can I open the public hearing again if applicant wouldn't, wouldn't address some of our comments?
Yeah, you can open the public hearing again.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing again. Rick.
Mr. Manners.
I just wanna touch on the EV parking stalls. In fact, today, our architect's going through the overall plan. As we're planning to go into our working drawings for all the approved parcels, but they're looking at the overall complete property right now. And that's one of the items that's on the list to incorporate those in the conceptual level. You know, Cal Green already requires every parcel, every building to have their level of EV parking stalls, EV handicap stalls. So we're looking at that right now, that will become part of the plan. Every parcel will have EVs. So I think the hotel, I think the one is, the one EV is the state requirement. To your point, you know, you want maybe four to six. I think maybe two is, is reasonable. And then all the others will be set up as our parcels come in. So a person with an electric vehicle, they'll have at least eight different parcel options to go to, to charge their car. So it should cover it.
That and the electric vehicle charging station with the civic center component, we, we will most likely have that. And then we're also working with the existing shopping centers, Commissioner Charleston, and some grant funding that we have available through, through the energy companies to bring electric charging stations to some of our existing, so that we're not in an EV-charging desert here in Eastvale.
Including the center.
Right.
Thank you.
So I'll close the public hearing again.
And I will entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make the motion, don't mind. I'll make a motion to approve PL, PLN nineteen dash two hundred twenty-three major development plan review to construct a ninety-six thousand, ninety-two approximately square-foot hotel with a four thousand square-foot banquet center. Do we need to add anything in there about?
We, we need some clarification on the EV charging-
EV.
Condition and whether, where the commission wants to go with that.
I would agree at this time with the applicant that two would be enough, as long as we know that the entire site will have more, because we didn't put them in at Heroes. So I, I would agree with that. And I do, I would like to put what the vice chair put in is, if we're not gonna do it on this parcel, we need to at least allow property on our side to adhere to some kind of walkway down at some point. Even if they say they don't want it, we at least need to allow it to, at some point to say, "Okay, if you say yes, we have room." So if it's not gonna be this project, I'm okay. So then I'll, I'll stay with my original motion.
We're, we're working to identify that and, and how we can do that. But we just haven't figured it out quite yet.
And can we put the mid-block crossing on Schleishman Road?
Yes.
So the, the, the two, so it's, just to clarify, the motion is for approval with the condition of two EV parking stalls as well as the internal walkway with the, with the crossing at Schleishman.
Yes.
Can, can we make the EV, two EV charging stations at Level Two?
Listen to this one, yeah.
Great.
Sure.
So we have a motion.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, if I, if I might just say, it, it's been a pleasure working with the IHG Group and, and the partners that are, that are local residents that are wanting to invest about twenty-five to thirty million dollars in this hotel to, and, and business in, in Eastvale. It, it's great to see people reinvesting in our community on something that we desperately need to serve both our residents and visitors. And I, I also wanna say a special thank you to the Lewis Retail Group. You're, you're gonna start seeing some minor modifications to the site plan, really focused on place-making and, and a destination and a walkable by, a walkable trail system throughout the center. Nice landscaping, nice sign-in amenities, and really a destination place. And something special that Eastvale can be really proud of. And we're, we're gonna be working really collaboratively because if we put City Hall here, we want something that is to our expectations as well. So it's, it's been a, a real collaborative effort with them. And I think when the finished product of how Schleishman looks, you know, we've even been talking about twinkle lights across the, the street. So that as you drive in at night, it has a, a lit-up experience and, and really a great feeling. So, but outdoor patio areas and for restaurants. And as, as Ike alluded to, or he's hoping with some restaurants, we are in really great conversations with some restaurants that might exceed some of our residents' expectations that we hear on social media quite frequently. And so we're continuing those things. We can't announce anything yet until the dotted line is signed. But we're, we're really hoping that we can have some celebration here. I, I, I think we're gonna be looking for a groundbreaking sometime in July on this site. So we'll get you information on that soon. So, and we'd love to have all of you out for the groundbreaking of this Hamner Place so that we can get this hotel vertical and serving our community. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody that's been involved. I also wanna say a special thank you to Gina. This is the quickest that I think the, the city of Eastvale has turned around a, a site plan and a process and approval for an applicant. She works from Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays to make sure we hit all the deadlines that we needed to do to get this going so that we could get this project on schedule. So, so thank you very much, Gina, for doing that.
And Mr. Vice Chair, I, I don't believe the motion that was made addressed the CUP for the alcohol use. So if the commission can address that issue.
I, I, I really thought we were gonna address that separately. Normally, the alcohol is addressed separately.
Yeah, and that, yeah, exactly, I just wanted to make sure that-
Right.
-we didn't bypass that.
And I was looking for it on the agenda going, wait, where's the cover page for that? It's usually an, an issue by itself, so.
Do we have to address that now?
Say that one more time.
Do we have to address it now, or was that included?
If, we'll, we'll need to, there'll need to be a separate mo-, or-
Sure.
-a new, a new motion on that, or another motion on that.
I'll entertain a motion.
Miss one.
No, so we did contact ABC. It's a type seventy for the hotel, and I'm gonna say, they said sixty-eight for the banquet facility. I discussed the project with them at length, ABC. They had no issues with it. They mentioned about coming by. And let me just say that there are several conditions of approval that need, I mean, findings that should be made for alcohol, and, and they were satisfactory. And we made those points in the agenda report. So it, our recommendation certainly would be for approval.
Yeah, and the only, only reason I asked that question, the reason we usually separate it out, is we always talk about there's training expectations that they have to follow, and we usually put that in the CUP. The employees have to be trained a certain way. So as long as we're following the precedents of what we've said before, I'm, I'm fine with everything.
And, and yes, those, those standard conditions are included in the, in CV.
Okay.
Good catch.
I'll make it, I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol and beverage plan.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner-
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations, the applicant. All right. We'll move on to the commission business. Um, I don't think we have any, right? Um, city staff report. Um, any staff reports at this point?
Uh, I think our city manager would do the honors.
Uh, I wanted to share last night, we had a, a, a public workshop on financial priorities, and it was live-streamed on Facebook. So if you want to go onto our Facebook page, you can watch all two hours of it. We had some lively, good discussion amongst the community there. I think there was about, um, about seventeen, twenty people there from the public there, and a lot of people watching it online. It was our first real big attempt on doing a live stream. Uh, uh, one of our, we've done it a couple times before, but we, uh, um, this was a, a great interaction, and people were asking questions, we were answering them from the live stream. Um, I'm trying to think, we have this, um, and then, uh, also wanted to share, um, that, um, we have, um, as part of our contract negotiations with Michael Baker and Inner West, um, in- Inner West provides our public works planning, or public, Inner West provides our public works, building and safety, um, public works, building and safety, GIS, ITS, and engineering, public works, um, all those. Uh, um, a- and Michael Baker provides our, uh, planning services. Um, and, uh, as a result of hiring an in-house community development director and city council asking for us to reduce our operating costs for contract services, um, we had both a committee development director, a planning director, and a planning manager. Uh, um, and when we sat down with Inner West and Michael Baker, um, historically, our planning services started out with PMC. PMC was purchased by Michael Baker. Uh, and, um, and as a result, um, um, we have had Eric and Kanika for a long time, uh, serving as contract planning services, uh, for the city of Eastville. Um, he, uh, as a result of direction from council to identify cost reductions in, in services, um, uh, we talked with Inner West and Michael Baker. And, uh, it, for per- personal and professional reasons, uh, Eric and Kanika left Michael Baker and went to Inner West. But they did that during a time when we were doing some major, uh, development projects in the city of Eastville. And so prior administration asked, could they stay on and work as a sub-consultant, uh, to Michael Baker? And so the planning director and the planning manager were sub-consultants, managing people that were the prime consultant on the planning services. It was getting a little, um, i- interesting. A- and, um, and as a result, um, it was supposed to be a temporary, uh, thing for a short term until we got through those, uh, big, uh, economic development, uh, projects. And we have since gotten through those. And so at the end of the fiscal year, um, both, uh, Michael Cashwagie, the COO for Inner West, and Bob Starks from Michael Baker, agreed that, uh, Inner West would no longer sub-consult to Inner West, or Michael Baker. A- and, um, so, um, Michael Baker will be bringing on a, uh, a senior planner, um, uh, to help oversee the planning staff that sit, uh, uh, in our offices uh, from Michael Baker, as well as, uh, our two Michael Baker, uh, planners, uh, right over here. And they will all be, um, taking direction from the community development director, Gina Gibson-Williams. And so, um, it, it, it is about a, uh, a six-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, shift in, in, in costs. Um, and so, um, that, um, that we're, we're making there. So, um, it's a, um, so, uh, my, uh, Eric and Kanika's last week is, uh, this week. Um, and, um, and they will, um, no longer be providing contract services for the city of Eastville, but they will still be working for Inner West, and they'll be working for other cities. I think we have the State of the City July seventeenth and eighteenth. The seventeenth is a business ticketed lunch, and the eighteenth is a c- a free community event with the taste of Eastville. Uh, um, and everybody is welcome, uh, to both events. I just, you have to buy a ticket for the luncheon, uh, um, but the, the similar presentation will be made at both of those. Uh, and, um, we did that to accommodate more people at different times, because some people are in our community during the day, and some are in the evening. And that way you could be part of the C- State of the City on, on, uh, and you can come to both events if you so choose. Uh, um, and, um, I'm trying to think, uh, we have picnic in the park, uh, coming up at the end of the month. I think it's the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, which is always a great event here in Eastville, uh, put on by JCSD. Um, and we'll have a booth out there as the city of Eastville as well. And I'm trying to think of what else we have that we need to share. But, um, uh, we are excited, um, with the direction we're going. We have a lot of, hopefully, exciting new, uh, development projects that are gonna be coming your way in the next few months, um, as we work to, uh, close some deals. We're doing some really good, uh, negotiating with our developers to help bring better project, uh, better projects as well as, um, even, uh, great, enhanced businesses, uh, uh, to our community, to provide choices and options to our residents and businesses. So, um, we're working really diligently to do that and address some of the, um, desires of the commu- desires of the community to have new restaurant choices or, or, uh, or enhanced restaurant choices, uh, from our two categories of fast casual and fast, uh, fast food dining, so.
Great, thank you. Um, commission communications. Anything?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, I, I just want to reiterate that, uh, I had conversations with Gina in the last couple days where some of the things that I've been hearing from some of our residents is we have upgraded how we're asking people to take care of their yards, how they're taking care of their, their property. But they said, why is it only held to the residential standard? What's happening to some of the property on, uh, when you go down Chandler? Why don't they have to be held to the standards that the bulk of the city does? Why the Lille property has two, uh, trailer, mobile homes there that the weeds are eight feet tall beside them? And there's cars there that you can't tell whether they're being run or not? Why don't they have the standard that we have? And I said, I can't answer that question. I mean, a lot of our older pieces of property that have been here for a long time uh, have been kind of overlooked, and we've let them stay a certain way. But that has come up several times in the last couple months to me. And I thought, we, we should at least look at it. Thank you.
It, it just, uh, just respond, we, it, it is something that we, a couple of years ago, we did work with the Leals to pick up a lot of their metal, and they recycled a lot of the prop- uh, a lot of the, uh, uh, scrap metal that was on their property. Um, uh, farmers, uh, uh, that have been farming for sixty years out here uh, usually just throw stuff out in the back forty. Um, and, and agricultural rights in a, in a community, uh, are, are al- also there. Uh, uh, I mean, so, um, just like you can't, in our subdivisions, own a cow, but they can own a cow or lots of cows. So, um, there, there's a, there's a little bit of difference on, on, in Chandler as well as with the Lille property of how they're zoned, uh, currently, so. Um, but hopefully, as the, the Lille master plan, uh, changes hands into a developer sometime soon, hopefully, um, we can wo- work to start developing that site.
Don't get me wrong. I, I, I understand, you know, how the farming works. Uh, uh, specifically where I got the complaint was right across from Home Depot.
Right.
Or the, the gas station there, where those two mo- mobile homes are by themselves.
Right.
And that's where they said, that just doesn't look right.
Yeah.
I said, I don't know, we'll check.
Yeah, and that's something that the, the Leals provided for, i- it's a, a free housing for their, uh, um, for their staff that live on the property. And they've, uh, um, the Lille family provided those many decades ago. Uh, um, and so some of them are not in the best repair. Um, but, um, yeah, I did speak with Johnny about that, um, the other day. And, and, uh, he, they, there, some of their ranch hands, uh, are, are living in those homes.
First, Hovey?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment about, um, some of the staff reports to us. Um, I have noticed at all of the meetings that it seems to come at us as more of you trying to influence us. And I think that we should be given the information and just the facts. And it shouldn't be skewed in any way. And, um, I would like just the facts, um, and so that we can make up our own minds on each agenda item.
Okay. Um, my comment basically is related to the, the, um, hit-and-run, um, that happened three weeks ago. Uh, the hit-and-run, um, that happened three weeks ago. Um, I think a fifteen-year-old boy, uh, was.
Six years old.
Yeah, was killed. Um, so I think we just need to be really, be mindful, um, and, um, just address some of the pedestrian and bicyclists. I mean, again, uh, y- you know, we don't ha- it's, they're out there, uh, especially during the school days and so forth. Uh, when the school's in, school's in session, um, they're walking and biking. Um, we have high school that have tons of kids just walking and biking. So we need to have, we need to make sure that our kids are aware, not, and our parents are aware, and our adults are aware, uh, to slow down and make sure that the safety is priority in our community, because our, our roads are wide. And, you know, we don't have that traffic that other communities have. So I, 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 I get that some folks like to speed a little bit more. But, um, at the same time, we need to have some kind of education campaign to make sure that we slow this, uh, speed down a little bit. So, um, so I, you know, the, the, that's just my comment. Kudos to staff for, especially for the hotel. Um, I, you know, I, I share that, um, view where, I think it, it was done in seven days, Gina? Uh, the, okay, so as a staff, I mean, you know, being in your shoes before, um, that's, that's, that's really quick turnaround. And I, you know, I was hoping that the, uh, the, the applicant was here to hear that, but that's, that's unheard of in any other planning world out here. So, yeah, you know, good job. Um, with that, um, one more thing is, uh, we have WRCOGIA coming up tomorrow. Um, but in the future, if we can have like SCAGGIA or WRCOGIA, if you can invite also the planning commissioners, I think they, I think they will benefit from it, uh, for, uh, to, if they attend, also attend those, uh, events out there. Um, I think that'll be helpful. So that's my comment. With that, um, uh, the regular meeting for the next planning commission will be July seventeenth, right? Six P M, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.